Want to kick us off today. Bill forty-three dash twenty-one.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the County Council. If you recall, the Code Enforcement Workforce, uh, work group recommended that the county establish a special revolving fund from revenue generated from fines, liens collected through BAI Code Enforcement. This bill establishes a non-elapsing, non-elapsing neglected property community fund to stabilize, repair, demolish derelict properties and structures. It also provides the ability for residents and business owners with financial assistance to bring properties into compliance and also implement existing or what I'll call enhanced code enforcement compliance technique techniques to deal trash, weed, debris, rat eradication, those kinds of, those kinds of things. Essentially, the, uh, the budget will include about $2 million in FY22. Historically, these funds for these types of services, contractual services, round between 700, 800,000 dollars. The sources of this revenues includes about 1.5 to 2 million dollars generated from code-related, uh, fees and fines. So that is, uh, Bill in a nutshell, forty, uh, what is it? Forty, I'm sorry, forty-three dash twenty-one. You have any questions? I'm here to answer them.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gutwold, I am excited. Can I just say that I'm excited? Uh, this is a long time overdue. We really need this. I just have a, I have a question. Does, um, what happens if the, the properties and tax default? Can you still use these funds then to, um, raise the, the home?
So, um, I understanding, yeah, they, I mean, these fees will come from, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. These, these, um, the monies will come from the fines and liens placed on the properties. So, you know, if it goes to tax sale or anything like that, we would get that money first. Um, but I guess Ed Blades might be able to explain, you know, what happens if the property goes into fall. We expect that that money will come from those liens that are ultimately played, paid to the county. And my understanding is that's, you know, there's been around $2 million a year over the past 10 years been collected from those, from those liens.
So, Mr. Blade, when they raised, with Mr. Blades, when they raised the house, then does the county put a evacuation on the land and then sell the land, uh, to someone else? And then that's where we kind of get the money back from raising of the house?
I think that, uh, I think when a property, we don't take properties for sale just for code enforcement liens. It has to be a tax sale issue. So we would take ownership of the property and then we would raise it, um, and then we would sell it to make the money back. But we could use this fund to raise, pay for the cost of the raising of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I guess if they, um, that's my question was if the property is about to change name and a new owner is about to take over the property, would it make sense to tear it down then if somebody else is getting ready to get it?
No, we would do what we could to assist with, uh, either we would collect the liens or work with the, uh, the two parties and possibly weaving some just to get the, the transaction. It's more important to get that, that property back on the tax rolls, transfer the ownership because we were dealing with a, an owner that doesn't care and get it to an owner that does care so we don't have these problems any longer.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments? I certainly appreciate it, Director Blade, uh, and Mr. Gutwold. This is an issue that I think we all, every district has at least a few properties like this that, uh, you know, something, something has to have. That's can't go forever and that's the way it's been. So if there's no more questions, we'll move on to, uh, Resolution sixty-six twenty-one, Designation as a Sustainable Community in Arbutus. And I will start with Amy Mantey and Josephine Silva-Cumar.
Silva-Cumar. Yeah. Yeah, you got it.
I got it. Tell me again. I may never get it again.
Silva-Cumar.
Okay. Silva-Cumar. Done. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, uh, Chairman and members of the County Council. Uh, this is for the Arbutus Sustainable Community Area Plan. It's part of a state program that, uh, requires a plan to be developed with the community and as such a resolution is required by the County Council. Um, this allows the community within the designated area to be eligible for funding from community legacy funds, burning funds, strategic demolition, those types of state programs. But I'll let Josephine talk a little bit about the process. She's been leading with the community to designate the plan.
Thank you, Amy. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Josephine Silva-Cumar. I'm the lead planner for the Arbutus Sustainable Community Designation effort. Um, the council has been actively engaged in this effort and being hands-on, especially with the community engagement and outreach, uh, in partnership with the community-led advisory committee and various county agencies. The Department of Planning publicly kickstarted this planning effort, uh, on August 27th, 2020. And, uh, there were six focus group meetings that were held in the month of November 2020 to gather public input. And there were multiple online question surveys, interactive map exercises. They were all posted online to solicit public input. And then we had survey questions were catered to gather information on issues and opportunities in the sustainable community areas. And there were map-based activities, um, allowed, uh, participants to indicate where targeted, uh, improvement should occur based on the focus of the event. And the draft application was posted online last month, April 21st, for the advisory committee and the public to view and comment. The application is now ready for submission. It is, um, due to state, um, this Friday, May the 21st.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, uh, Councilman, Councilman Perk, you want to, uh, add some comments?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Jones. I appreciate that and to, do wanna really thank Josephine and Amy and the planning group for all their work and help here. Also, a lot of people in the community, Bettina Tebow and Jade Dillow, Southwest Visions, Greater Arbutus Business Association, uh, groups like UMBC, South, uh, potentially Heritage Greenway, there were a lot of, of various, uh, citizens and different groups that really put a lot of time and effort into, into trying to, uh, develop this. And, you know, it's, it's needed. I mean, it's, uh, Arbutus is an area that's, uh, been working to revitalize and redevelop. And this is yet one more tool or one more arrow in the quiver, so to speak, to really help in those efforts to, um, really try to bring a really good and, and thriving business, um, which of course supports our community and, uh, supports the citizens. So I just wanted to thank, you know, there's many, many other people involved. Uh, Brian Morse from my office, I know, was been pretty involved as well. And, uh, I just wanted to thank everybody for their effort. Uh, I think this is, uh, definitely needed. Uh, I think this will be very helpful to Arbutus in addition to, of course, the commercial revitalization area. You know, I think the sustainable community, um, really important to continue to, um, keep this area stable and, and hopefully, uh, growing as well. So thank you, Chairman Jones, and thank you, our planning staff and, and, uh, all the citizens who really helped in this. It's, uh, it's great to see it coming for, to fruition. And I also appreciate the, uh, county executive support as well. That's something I know he's been very, uh, supportive of. So we appreciate the teamwork and, uh, thanks again, Chairman.
We want to welcome Councilman Perk and, uh, I'm excited about that designation as well because, you know, Arbutus is a nice town and we certainly want to see them succeed and grow for sure. Any other questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, finally I got on. I, I, uh, uh, you know, my wife grew up in Arbutus and I think things began to go down when she left, uh, and married me. So, uh, I wish Arbutus all the best. It's a great community, no doubt about it. And, uh, I, uh, congratulate, uh, the Council on this legislation.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cat. Now we'll move on to, uh, I believe, uh, number six. Let me see, Miss DeAndrea Walker, Contract with Howard's Organic Products. Miss DeAndrea Walker. Oh, it's good to see you, Ms. Walker. We haven't seen you in at least five minutes.
At least five minutes. Good afternoon, members of the council and Mr. Chairman. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Howard's Organic Products Incorporated to provide your waste processing services at the Baltimore County Central Acceptance Facility Residence Drop Off Center in Cockeysville. The contract will commence amongst council approval and continue for one year and will renew automatically for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term and additional 120 days. They may not exceed the amount appropriated for these services for the entire contract terms. Estimated compensation totals, uh, 537,000 for the entire five-year, four-month term, including the renewal and extension periods. The contract acceptance process, bush, branches, and other types of recyclable yard materials received at the county's, uh, central acceptance facilities, residence drop-off center, and Cockeysville, and reduce the material to mow. Uh, this, uh, this contract was through negotiations, sorry, and the first contract, the department advised that after competitive procurement process, you'll know it's, the incumbent contract was contracted and was requested to provide a quote. That ends my testimony, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, this service as well as so many services we provide, recyclable facilities at the regional acceptance facilities are very important to the citizens of Baltimore County. So any questions or comments? Hearing none, let me guess, uh, before we move on to number four, let me just take this opportunity to welcome our county attorney back, James Benjamin. It's good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's good to see you as well.
So welcome back. Now we move on to number four, Mr. Leonard Howard, Director of, uh, the Department of Economic and Workforce Development, purchase order for Margrove Strategies.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The department is requesting approval of a contract with Margrove Strategies in an amount of 101,000 dollars. As I mentioned at our budget hearing, uh, on the 12th, this contract is a continuation of our anchor strategy approach. Uh, we are fortunate to have had a contractor on board who could pivot with us and incorporate all the anchor strategy work with the work that's needed in recovery. The contract will, um, it, it really does help to solidify our relationships with what we all know as the Towson Six, Towson U, GMBC, Shepherd Fred, UMBC, St. Joseph's and Goucher, but also, um, has extended to areas such as the Pikeville Armory and, and really working with all of us in trying to, uh, identify those areas in the county that are in, in deep need of economic recovery. So we respectfully request that this contract be approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howie. Are there any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Ms. Laura Riley, Department of Aging, Home Delivered Meal Program.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a special fund budget appropriation transfer or BAT totaling $500,000 from the Congregate Meal Program to the Home Delivered Meal Program to address increased demand for home-delivered meals during the pandemic. These, this is, uh, federal funded money that, uh, I've come to you before as well earlier in the pandemic. Because of the definition of a congregant meal, we are not able to serve those meals. So we're moving the money over to home-delivered meals in order to fulfill the needs of the clients right now, um, during a recovery phase.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Riley, for your work throughout citizens. Any questions? Hearing none, we will move on to, uh, Ms. Deborah Shendel, Property Management. Broadway Services will be the first contract and then, uh, Sky Clean will be the second.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Council Chair and members. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Broadway Services, Inc. to provide high dusting and cleaning services for surfaces over 12 feet from the floor in various county-owned operations and buildings. The contract does not specify a compensation, maximum compensation for a one-year term or a five-year, four-month term. The estimated compensation totals 548,281,000 dollars. This was a competitively bid, uh, process. And again, this will, um, service about 34 buildings.
Thank you, Ms. Shendel. I, I, you know, I'm just thinking to myself about those 12, 15-foot extended poles with dusters on the top. I guess it's a little more than that.
Yes, sir. We, it's those big, um, gymnasiums that we have for rec where you have to bring scissors or lifts in to get them. That's what it is.
No problem. Any questions? All right, Ms. Shendel, I mean, uh, going to the next Sky Clean. You gonna clean the skies too?
I'm gonna clean the skies. You know it. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Sky Clean, Inc. to provide window cleaning contracts at various county buildings. Um, it is a competitive bid that process that it went through with a one-year term or a five-year, four-month term. The estimated compensation totaled 430,419 for the entire five-year and four-month term of this contract. Um, this does include 48, um, locations and that includes the 18 libraries.
You don't have any.
Most of these are done, um, in semi-annual processes or as needed. That's the end of my testimony. I can take any questions if you'd like.
You're on mute, Mr. Chair.
I don't see Ms. Rogers, but I hear her. Ms. Rogers?
She was just pointing on that out that you were on mute, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
When you're, yes, when you're here, listening, speaking.
Okay. I certainly started about that. I, uh, but yes, uh, recognizing you, Ms. Shendel, is one of the dream team, one of the folks around here that's really doing a great job and we certainly appreciate you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So now we will move on to, Ms. Seth. Move to Resolution sixty-four dash twenty-one, authorized agreement for Solarstar, the Hearnwood, and as well as another agreement with Solarstar Parkville. Seth Blumman from Property Man.
Thank you very much, Sean. Good afternoon, council. Wanted to provide an overview of you for the, uh, pilot resolutions. Uh, the county has executed agreements with Sun Power to lease portions of the Hearnwood and Parkton Landfills, uh, to Sun Power-owned liability corporations for a 25-year term with renewal options for the county. Uh, Sun Power will install solar facilities on the sites and the county will purchase the energy generated pursuant to a power purchase agreements is basically the deal for, uh, buying the energy. They're called PPAs. Uh, the PPAs set the rates to be paid and include options to purchase the systems at year 10 and year six of the agreement as well as termination fees. Uh, the execution of this project will provide a substantial stride in the county's goals to generate, uh, renewable electricity, uh, 43 million kilowatt hours, which is equivalent to 35% of the county's 2019 electricity baseline. So a lease will be executed, uh, that will result in the property becoming now taxable because of the fact that Sun Power will operate the systems there. And the tax property article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, as amended, provides that the county may enter into an agreement with the owner of the facility, uh, for solar power that's located in the county for a negotiated payment of real and personal property taxes on the facility. The payment in lieu of taxation or pilot will reduce the negative impact of taxation on our, our purchase agreement rate, so the contracted rate to the county. And instead, the county will receive payments, uh, from Sun Power instead of absorbing this taxation into the PPA rate. So such payments will be paid by Sun Power and accepted by the county as long as they are not in default under the lease of the agreement. In this particular case, uh, by setting out the annual amount to be paid throughout the term, the Sun Power developer and its financiers can better plan for and arrive at the price to charge for power so they can plan years out with a set rate so that they can know what it's gonna look like down the line. Otherwise, uh, the rate that we charge to the county would be increased if taxes or the assessment of the property are increased during the term. So it's, it's a win-win for both sides. Uh, upon execution of the agreement, uh, for the pilot, um, the project will be classified as exempt from Baltimore County real and personal property taxes for the period beginning upon the effective date and continuing until the termination of the lease, which is the expiration date. So the recommendation is that the county council approve a payment in lieu of real and property taxes for the premises and for the solar project and authorize the county executive to enter into such an agreement. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I, I have one, Seth, and you can answer for me. I mean, I look at projects like this and the first thing comes to my mind is, first, let me make sure I have it right. We own the property. We're gonna allow somebody else to put solar panels on it. Then we're gonna buy the energy from them and not rescinding the whole tax issue. So I'm just wondering for myself, if this is such a good deal and we're gonna get all of this energy, why don't we just own it ourselves? Why do we need anybody? I, why don't we just buy the panels, put them out there? Whatever they generate, you get 100% of it for free.
It, uh, turn on our investment. It tends to be quite costly if we have to pay it all upfront and finance the construction ourselves. A power purchase agreement, uh, allows you to basically, um, buy only the energy and the, um, installer and developer owns the system itself, thus making it, uh, quite viable. They charge us a power purchase rate lower than our standard electricity rates. So that makes the project more viable and we've sought out a cost avoidance or break-even point so that it's financially viable. If you do larger systems, um, you get an economies of scale, uh, because the more power you produce, the, the better the rates tend to be. So we are avoiding the, uh, construction costs of building our own system. This is how most jurisdictions execute solar powered agreements is through power purchase agreements.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much for that explanation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Etch?
Yeah. Um, go, going back to the Parkton landfill, I think it was three or four years ago when the county entered into an agreement with a solar company to do what, uh, is being done here. What happened that, that agreement fell apart? And what's different about this one that it won't fall apart? That, uh, we can tap the, uh, Parkton landfill for the, uh, energy it can produce under this scenario?
So basically, um, a few years ago, the economics fell apart on, uh, Solar City, I believe it was, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Deborah and Ed, uh, but they didn't have the financing for this agreement. It's a very viable company, Sun Power, but also a, a big, uh, significant reason that this will pan out better is that we've built in a, a interconnection allowance. So that's when we have to hook the system up to the BGE grid and the cost of interconnecting the power. We've built an allowance into the power purchase rate to go up to a certain amount where the, uh, developer must absorb that cost themselves before they charge us anymore on the PPA rate. So we believe that will help produce a better outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Etch. I was actually sitting here thinking the same thing myself. I was thinking, didn't you do this before? So any additional questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
This almost sounds similar to our discussion earlier, uh, on, uh, my I-Pass about what's happening in Prince George's County where it's kind of a capital leaseback in terms of someone else building and then leasing to us. And so I just wanted to point that out that it's similar to our earlier discussion, um, on, on schools.
Well, this is a much more, as I understand it, probably a much more, very simplistic similarity, uh, I would think, sort of like leasing or whatever. You go ahead and answer that question, Seth. You want, you did, you didn't have the privilege of being involved in other conversations, but the point.
It's not really a question. It's just an observation. That's all.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Uh, any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Bluman.
Thank you.
Did I get that right?
Bluman, yep.
Yep. Okay. Um, next, we'll move on to Ed Blades, Contract with Spigler Petroleum Equipment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Spigler Petroleum Equipment, LLC to provide maintenance services for the county's 44 fuel sites. A Spigler is the current, the county's current maintenance provider and was awarded a new contract term through a competitive procurement process based on low bid. Uh, this will be a one-year contract with four one-year renewals and a not-to-exceed amount of $540,000 for the entire term. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comment? Hearing none, Mr. Blade. Go right ahead to the next, American Rescue Plan, the big one.
Okay. We have Mr. Reed presenting on that.
Mr. Blades, would you like me to take that?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, council members. Uh, Bill forty-two, twenty-one is a request for approval of a supplemental appropriation of 161 million dollars. Uh, this is Baltimore County's estimated allocation for the American Rescue Plan that was passed by Congress and signed into law on March 11th. interim guidance on the funding was just released last week, but to some, there's four main eligible uses of ARP funding. And one again, it's, as we know, it's to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. And this would include things that would happen to individuals and assistance to households, um, through assistance, uh, public assistance or small businesses, nonprofits, or aged impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Two, we could also provide premium pay for essential workers. Three, we could use this funding unlike CARES for revenue replacement. Um, in, in total, we can't cherry pick what we know now, certain areas that have fallen off but have to follow a strict methodology that we're working through for revenue replacement. And then finally, unlike CARES as well, is that we can make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, including public works. What we know the funding cannot be used for is depositing funds in any pension fund and it cannot be used for directly or indirectly offsetting a reduction in the net tax revenue resulting from a change in law, regulation, or administrative, uh, interpretation. We're currently in the closeout phase of CARES funding, so this appropriation will help us in our continuity, um, to keep our, our COVID-19, uh, response still going. Again, since the guidance was released just last week, uh, the administration is currently working on a blueprint that will guide us in how the funding will be spent. And this will happen in conjunction with, uh, the sub-cabinet on economic, economic recovery led by, uh, Director Howie of Economic and Workforce Development. Uh, again, with these funds, the focus is not going to be on the response to the pandemic as, as necessarily as much as the unbudgeted, um, or diverted costs, but really focusing and using this funding as an investment opportunity for our community and its residents.
Okay.
Answer any questions?
Any questions or comment? I, I did have one. Uh, I was just curious, um, if we don't have a detailed plan at this point, I mean, I appreciate the things you said, they are somewhat or could be construed as being a little vague. If we just got the instructions, uh, what, last week? And we're working on a plan, what would be the rush to do this now? Why not wait till we have a plan that we all can look at, kick the tires, make input, make suggestions, recommendations? If this is gonna go out through, what, 2024?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the obligation period is from Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the obligation period is from March 3rd of this year to uh, December 31st of 2024. Uh, again, the intent is to open this up as a countywide grant program, since this is a countywide response that would be managed by the Office of Budget and Finance. And again, as we, we are fully actually a little bit over obligated in CARES at this point. Um, and we have a lot of, of response, although some of it is ramping down of charges that are, that would be appropriate to move over before the end of the fiscal year. So that would be the intent of, of having this appropriation approved.
But I guess that, I guess the issue for me is about a plan, like what specifically uh, would the money go toward? I heard the general analogy for the general uh, overview, but at what, so when we develop a plan as to what to do with each one of these $160 million, would, would you come back to the council for us to then appropriate or approve it? Or how would that work? Or would this just be, we do it today, we never have anything to say about the money again?
I think the, the, the intent would be that, you know, while we absorb these guidelines and the interim guidance that we could draw up again, the blueprint, and I believe we'd be happy to share that with council. Um, again, the, the intent of, of ARP, unlike CARES, is that the plans would be more thought out and, and change as the response to the pandemic changes and some real opportunity for um, s- some lasting projects. So it's hard for me to say right now. We're going to spend 20 million on this. We're going to spend 20 million on that, but we do have some various costs that are going through continuing from CARES. Um, that, that would be picking up at the end of, of May.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could add, um, you know, the councils, we're heading, coming into the, the council's summer schedule, so it'll be one meeting in June, one meeting in July, one meeting in August. And, and we certainly would like to have access to the full, the full authority to the 161 million now as opposed to um. Um, having to, to delay anything.
Okay, Ms. Rogers?
And, and Mr. Chairman, as we did with CARES Act funding, um, we, we can't put the broad categories. Uh, I don't know if you recall how we presented the 140 million of the CARES funding, which were in the category, because right now with the guidance that's coming and going into um, the end of CARES Act uh, funding where we, we have certain obligations that we could transfer to the uh, ARPA funding, that's the reason to move ahead so we can open up the grant. But we can do um, broad areas of uh, where we uh, project. You know, this is what we're working on, where we project for funding, how much is economic recovery, similar to point to some of the programs that we operate under CARES. But we'd like, um, Mr. Reed said, we just got the guidance to be able to see what pieces fit under um, the various categories. And a new category this time is on, you know, the expansion of broadband as well as the, the ability to use this fund for uh, water and soup. But we haven't, you know, we haven't had the opportunity to definitively lay out each of the program because we know we have a lot of needs um, in terms of, of recovery, continuing some of the economic recovery activities we've been working on already.
Okay, listen, uh, there's no question about it. We want to make sure we utilize every penny we get. And we certainly want to not tie anybody's hands in terms of keeping the economy going and helping the citizens of all accounts. I guess, you know, we think about the CARES Act and we think about where we came from and things are starting to open up to a certain degree. Uh, at some point, we'll get back to the regular course of business and uh, obviously, us looking, thank them ourselves. Right now, this is, we were going to CARES Act, we're in the thick of things and we did what we had to do. But now that we're sort of getting somewhat back to normal, the question is, should we see a what would be the rush of not seeing a plan first? Even if you had to spend what you have to spend on the things that CARES Act were coming up short. You know, I'm just curious about why should we approve 161 million without seeing anything? And, you know, just, yes, I, I hear the broad brushes, the broad overview, but it's, it seems like the uh, a stretch. I'm guess putting it out there. That's what I feel. I don't know if anybody else feels the same. Any additional questions or comments? Am I wrong to feel this way? Uh, Lauren or Liz? Yes, no?
Well, typically with um supplemental appropriations, the council does see a plan for the use of the funds. So I guess as Councilman Jones said, is there a reason why what's needed at this point, what's identifiable, cannot be appropriated?
As most appropriations, I guess if you could uh, clarify for us just a little bit. In terms of multi-appropriations versus end appropriation?
So, but do a portion first. As far as what you know, you said you have more of an immediate need to roll over the, for uh, what's coming off of CARES and a few of the other immediate needs, premium pay and so forth that you've identified. And then once the um, when you've come further along with the plan, then appropriate the, the second portion. I, I understand the money is probably coming in two parts. So that's, I guess, what I would pose.
Um, Mr. Reed, do you want to give the uh, that is what the guidance uh, suggests about how the money is coming this this time because um, uh, Ms. Smokerson, I don't believe that the money is actually going to come in two parts based on the guidance that we received.
I, I can.
Can you share that?
I can, I'm saying, yeah. Um, so, you know, what we know, the, the applications is submitted and we expect if, if that the funding would be granted in two tranches with half any day now, um, and the other half due 12 months after the first payment. Only if the unemployment rate is 2% above its, its uh, pre-pandemic levels. Um, from what we see, Baltimore County was at 3.5% unemployment rate in February 2020, and we're currently at six but falling. So depending on when Treasury makes that determination. Um, we may get the 161 upfront. Um, and any day now, again, you know, uh, how we, you know, obviously the, the expenditure is not going to go out the door in that quickly, but um, the, the intent was this be one grant program, a multi-year. Um, so.
So, so we don't know if we're going to get half of it? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know at this time. It depends on how they interpret our unemployment rate.
So should we at least wait for that part?
They, they will make that, um, they will make that determination, Mr. CE, before it, when they certify. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, when they certify the money to come to us. So we will know. We will definitely know, Mr. Chairman, because they're going to do the certification before the money is released to us.
Right. I guess my point is, should we wait until we know whether we're going to get it before we appropriate using the money? Yes, that's my question. We could talk offline. I don't want to hold everybody up. Uh, we, we can do some more discussion. Any, any additional questions or comments? From any of their members? Okay. Thank you very, very much. And we will move on to number 10. Which is Bill forty-four dash twenty-one. Uh, Ms. Pop? Councilman Catch?
Hear me? Oh, good, because I tried to make a comment before about you, Mr. Chairman, that I think you were using common sense. In some of the comments that you've made about when to spend, when not to spend, et cetera, but I couldn't get on to, to say that. Um, the legislation that you have in front of you uh, deals with an extended stay motel that's in the Hunt Valley Industrial Park. And I know there's a more modern name, but I choose to use that one. Um, it's a, a place where uh, there's 96 units. And it has become uh, widely known that that facility, uh, some of the activities that are going on there are not uh, very wholesome. And uh, there's a new buyer, owner who wants to rehab the entire facility and convert it into apartments. Uh, it's right next to the light rail. And so the legislation you have in front of you uh, will allow the owners of this facility to uh, convert to 96 or 98 apartments. And uh, you know, the community agrees with it, the Greater Timonium Community Council. Uh, the views have no problem with it and it's going to be a big plus to the county's uh, tax rolls. And a big plus to the area. Uh, it's, it's Councilman Patoka's constituents who are coming over into my district. Uh, because my constituents certainly would not uh, engage in anything that was if, right, right, Ed?
That's right.
Yeah, he's a constituent, so. But any, all seriousness, this is going to be a plus for the council, I mean, for the county, uh, et cetera. So uh, I'd appreciate your favorable report on this uh, legislation.
Thank you very much, Councilman Catch. We certainly uh, you know, certainly appreciate all the development on top of the transit, you know, it's sort of like the transit oriented development, all of that is good. And any additional questions or comments? Councilman Poken, you don't want to pile back?
Uh, no, um, we like
I didn't say anything appropriate. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, uh, we, uh, we, we like interacting with uh, our third district neighbors.
I'm still trying to find out, are there books in the library in Park, in Pikeville or not?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Catch, Mr. Chairman. I yield back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, okay, Ms. Rogers?
Uh, I can attest that there are books in the Pikeville Library. I think my grandchildren.
Great, great. Good.
Okay, uh. All right, next one, Bill forty-five twenty-one, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, Bill forty-five twenty-one amends subsection four fifteen dot two dot B threat dot three of the Baltimore County zoning regulations to expand the number of permitted locations for a temporary use trailer. You may recall that Councilwoman Bevins sponsored legislation that allows companies such as Green Drop to locate banned collection sites in the White Marsh area. They approached me about a Towson location, uh, but to avoid a piecemeal approach, I'd like to make this countywide to commercial areas of a certain density. All of us on the council deal with dumping and it seems like this is an excellent way to encourage recycling of household goods. Uh, so with that, um, I ask for your support.
Thank you very much and certainly appreciate your work on this issue and certainly appreciate Councilwoman Bevins. Uh, who's been back on this issue for quite some time. Councilwoman Bevins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Councilman Marks, thank you for moving forward. If I'd like to co-sponsor uh, your bill and I really do think um, that all larger shopping centers should take a look at this. And I think it can be really something worthwhile for our, our communities and to remind everybody that these are manned locations where somebody sits there all day uh, while the goods come, uh, come in. So it's actually given an employment opportunity to someone as well. So thank you.
Thank you for your leadership as well. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Okay, moving right along, uh, Councilman Marks, uh, Bill forty-six dash twenty-one.
Mr. Chair, we have uh, two speakers for Bill forty-five.
Oh, forty-five, okay, two speakers, okay. Bring on the speaker.
Uh, our first speaker is Kyle Ruffing. Mr. Ruffing?
Hey guys, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great, thanks. Uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, I appreciate it. Um, especially Councilwoman Bevins, Councilman Marks. Um, we are actually opening the first Green Drop at the White Marsh Mall on uh, June 18th that just got uh, figured out today. Um, and uh, and as they mentioned, we are a fully staffed um, donation collection company. Um, we partner with landlords who have plentiful uh, parking, parking spaces in their shopping centers. Uh, we really do try to reduce the overstuffed bins and the, the trash buildup. Um, and try to, try to keep a lot of these donations out of landfills. So um, Baltimore County has been a huge, huge uh, huge support system for us and we, we look forward to, to kind of growing throughout the county as, as you guys allow us to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you.
Speaker.
Our next speaker is Ron D. Mr. D?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm just a colleague of Mr. Ruffing. I have nothing really else to add except to say thank you and we appreciate the county being uh, an advocate for this business model and our business and we look forward to continuing to grow within the county.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh. Next, we'll move on to Bill forty-six twenty-one.
Okay, um, Mr. Chair, I have a presentation. If uh, I think Miss Bell Castro, if you can load that up, please.
One moment, Councilman Marks, I'm, I'm multitasking here. Let me port up.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bear with me. Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you. This is the one from this morning, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. So thank you very much. I prepared a short presentation on this bill. Uh, in short, Bill forty-six twenty-one allows for an area that previously was designated as a shopping center to become a low level, a senior villas in one part of Perry Hall's Honeygo area. Uh, next slide. There you go. So uh, the history of this location in 2000, uh, before I was elected. Um, the county council zoned what is now the corner of Bel Air Road and Honeygo Boulevard for commercial development. A shopping center was approved here in 2008. Uh, again, two years before I was elected. And um, since 2010, I've been working with neighbors to limit uses at this site. For example, uh, Lidl grocery store located to a vacant site uh, down the road on Bel Air Road instead of building here. Next slide. Okay, I think I can do that. Hold on. There you go. And uh, so, so what the developer has come back to us with is, I might have skipped everyone. Hold on. Okay, uh, so you may remember last summer, the developer of this location proposed multi-story condominiums here. Um, the developers, the Southern Land Company, they're very active in Baltimore County. Uh, due to community opposition, the enabling legislation was withdrawn. Uh, I subsequently put together an 11-member task force composed of local residents to discuss alternatives. The task force was headed by Pat Keller, president of the Perry Hall Provenance Association and a former director of planning for Baltimore County. And the, and this task force again included residents uh, from the communities immediately around this area. Uh, the number one choice in a poll of the members was a senior restricted villa style development. The number one choice in a poll of the members was a senior restricted villa style development. There's a lot of benefits to this type of housing. As you all know, more than 25% of Baltimore County's population is a senior citizen. Secondly, there are no impacts to local schools. Thirdly, the low elevation makes this much more appealing development as one enters Perry Hall. And that was one of my concerns with the earlier proposals for this area was the, the height of the structures as you enter Perry Hall from Kingsville. So I think this product is, again, much more appealing, and it was the number one choice of the, of the residents who were on this task force. So we put together, in working with the developer, we, we put together a proposal that includes several important components. The first thing is the developer has agreed to provide a donation to complete improvements at Angel Park. If you add up the collective amount of open space improvements that the developer will be making, I think it's well over $120,000. The developer also agreed to move an access point for this project east from the Forge Reserve community, which is immediately to the south, and also restrict elevations along Forge Road, and that is reflected in, in the amendments that you've been shown. I think a really important agreement that we wrote a reach with the developer also concerns preserving several sections of towering trees on an adjacent property that they are developing. If you're familiar with this part of Perry Hall, there are these gigantic majestic trees that frame this area of Bel Air, Honeygo Boulevard. And as noted on the blueprints above the picture, the developer has agreed to preserve those trees as they work on an adjacent property. I know you're going to hear from Neighbor Space talking about the, the open space in this area. Those of you who are familiar with this part of Perry Hall know that it is in many ways a greenway. There are four parks along this corridor, four parks. In 2004, Baltimore County opened Honeygo Park. Between 2014 and 2016, three additional parks opened, and Baltimore County just purchased a fifth park a half mile away from Honeygo Boulevard. That's the Beerman property. You've been probably here from Neighbor Space, and I know you, they've sent you a position paper, and, and look, I respect Neighbor Space. I've worked with them on many, many initiatives. There are many outstanding volunteers associated with Neighbor Space. This is just one where I, I just disagree with their position. There's this old saying, don't let the, the perfect be the enemy of the good, and I kind of feel that's, that's where we're, that's where they're coming from. You know, we contrary to the position paper that you all received from Neighbor Space, these units will be governed by design criteria. Secondly, the input process that culminated in this proposal was far more inclusive than that which will occur if new buildings are proposed in an already approved shopping center. The fact of the matter is, the developer has the right to build commercial uses here. We created a process that was inclusive and collaborative, involved community leaders from around this area, and we came up with, I think, what was a good compromise solution. Thirdly, Neighbor Space says in, in its position paper that we are attempting to rule by legislative fiat. I really reject that language. We are elected officials. Every single one of us in the county council has to make difficult decisions sometimes to solve problems. That's what I've tried to do over the past nine months. This bill is the result of nine months of compromise and deliberation by residents who live closest to this development. And then finally, you know, I've been a big supporter of open space, and all of you have been. In 2012, the county council passed Neighborhood Common Zoning. I think every one of you on the county council has used this zoning to protect acreage in your districts. In fact, about 4,000 acres of land have been reserved as open space under Neighborhood Commons. So that concludes my presentation. I put a lot of work into this bill. The community leaders you're going to hear from have put a lot of work into this. And all I will say is, as we conclude here, listen to the local residents. They are the ones most immediately affected by this, and I think they have tried to come up with the best compromise possible in working with the developer. Thank you very much.
Councilman Marks?
Yes.
Wait, wait, oh, I'm sorry. Let me guess, thank you, Councilman Marks. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this, but I feel like we all have been in this, in this vehicle with you, so to speak, as we've been up and down and all around with this particular property. So I know you put an awful lot of work in it, and certainly hopeful that this will be the, we can sort of get this off your, off the docket and move forward with other things. Councilman Catch, go right ahead.
Yeah, I apologize for jumping in. I'm, I'm having sound issues sometimes, audio. Nevertheless, Councilman Marks, I've been approached by any number of developers wanting to get permission to build a senior only development. I've seen a number of documents which are supposedly designed to make sure that these homes stay senior housing, that after it's sold, someone else isn't able to buy who's not a senior. Do you have a document that you think is foolproof that could run with each one of these homes once it's sold to a senior? It's kind of tricky, and I want to make sure that if something is advertised as senior only, that that's indeed what it's going to be, and that there's not going to be any tricks pulled to, and if you talk to people who live in senior developments around the country, there's a lot of tricks being played. And so I was just wondering, you know, your comments about what I've just said.
Yeah, I, I think the way to do this is have, have it run with the deed, right? It could be with the language being the deed, and certainly, Mr. Rosenblatt's going to testify about how we can make this bulletproof. I actually have an idea, Councilman Catch, where just like we have an NC designation on certain zones, that we create an S designation, and then maybe we use that S, that S suffix to designate with the next rezoning cycle, senior only housing. It's just a thought I've had, it needs to be vetted, but I think you raised some, some good questions, and I appreciate you for raising them.
Who, with this proposed development, who will enforce the senior only? Okay, let's say five years from now, you know, there's homes of which somehow five people, five families moved in that aren't, there's no seniors. Would it be the community association itself, or would it be Baltimore County? I mean, have you thought about that, and what conclusion have you come to?
Yeah, I, you know, the, I would suppose the HOA could do it, but also, you know, permits could do it as well, I would think.
I, I think whichever one would be the most effective is what, is the one we need to tap.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, it's not so easy. Sounds easy, but it's not.
Sure, no, it's a good, good question.
Way in there, Mr. Benjamin. I'm assuming that it would be the HOA.
If I couldn't hear you, say it again?
I said I'm, I'm under the assumption, I'm not an attorney, I guess, tell you one on television, but I, I thought I was under the assumption that the enforcement would be the homeowners association or the neighborhood, not so much Baltimore County, if somebody were to move in five years from now who were not a senior only.
I would concur with that, and I, I don't know, is Tom Boswick on the call, would he, was he on the, um?
Yes.
Would you agree with that, Tom?
I think so, Mr. Benjamin James. I think, I mean, the, the bill does contain the language, you know, unlike sometimes where it's a covenant agreement, so it definitely would be the party to that covenant agreement. You know, this bill does have occupancy restricted language in it, so, so this part of the zoning regulations would have language that says the owner of each unit is required to ensure that at the time of any sale, conveyance, or lease of a unit, at least one occupant is 55 years of age or older, and that person's under 18 are prohibited from residing unless, you know, the, the people are necessary to care for an occupant. So, you know, it, it, it definitely could be the HOA, but you know, there could be a component of maybe code enforcement that would be able to investigate. Now, they wouldn't be able to obviously get into the house necessarily, but they could probably investigate.
I, yeah, Mr. Chair.
You know, we have a lot of speakers, so I don't want to, go ahead, Councilman Catch.
Yeah, I, I am a bit concerned about the homeowners association taking on this task. Many homeowners associations had difficulty getting people to serve homeowners in the first place, so, and also, you, and everybody knows that this senior only, it, it's partially because of the traffic situation and the school overcrowding, because a community like this, senior community, and lo and behold, five years from now, you turn around, and there's all these cars there because people are of the driving age and work, and then they have children. So it's important to find a way to enforce this, because I think it's going to be very beneficial to the county in the future, and hopefully, and I'm sure, Councilman Marks is, I know he works hard on these things, and hopefully, we're going to be able to find a solution to this, to protect these areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, I guess we will start. Any additional questions, comments, from the members? There are none, I guess we will start with the speakers.
Chairman Jones? First speaker. That would be David Altfeld.
Yep.
Um, before I begin, can I just, I sent a little chat to remind everyone, can you please mute yourself when you're not speaking, because I think it's causing some audio problems, some background noise, and I want to make sure everybody can hear everybody clearly. Let me find our speaker, I'm looking for him on the list.
Called Dave.
I'm not sure if Mr. Altfeld called in by phone, because I do not see him on our list of attendees. Um, can give him a couple minutes. Our next speaker is Klaus Phillipsen. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Klaus Phillipsen, living in Catonsville, and testify on behalf of Neighbor Space. Councilman Marks mentioned Neighbor Space a couple of times. We have been in discussion with him, and unfortunately, we didn't come to a full agreement here. Thank you for allowing us to speak. We agree with Councilman Marks with the desired outcome, that residential use on that lot is better than more commercial use. We also agree with the importance of that gateway as an urban design entry point to Honeygo. We don't agree with the process in which this is done. So the way this is stipulated, it is just really addressing a single lot, and as such, it smells very much like spot zoning. And then the, the bill moved to exempt any setback requirements on all sites, the regulations of the overlay district, and the open space requirements, which since has been amended with new language, which still has stipulations in there that we can't agree with. And then the development impact fee is also eliminated. So in other words, the, the parceling question doesn't have to comply with BL zoning that is in effect today, not with the DR zoning, not with the POD, and not with the Honeygo overlay. So it creates an entire world on its own, a spot zone parcel that can achieve this miraculous status by way of limited exemption. And if you look what it says about limited exemption, there is no language in limited exemption that would work for this particular application. And in addition, this parcel is now also per resolution, that's a different topic before you as a revitalization district, although it is actually undeveloped, mostly undeveloped today. So a careful study of, of the limited exemption really would show that that is not something that you can use here. And it is bad land use policy if one doesn't agree with the underlying zoning to not use the CCMP to rezone it, not use a POD process, and then evade every restriction that any zoning has for impact fees and adequate facility ordinances, or balance the fact that there are existing parks against the obligations of any new development to provide open space or pay a fee, even if the outcome of residential use instead of strip shopping is desirable. So if one thinks that the setback rules with impact fees or the space regulation should be altered, then it would be the right process to do this by changing the underlying regulations and codes, and not by papering over and these perceived conflicts with additional bills that make the development process more obtuse. And for that particular reason-
Mr. Phillips, your three minutes, if you can wrap up your comments, please.
Yeah, I was at the last minute. I urge you to vote against this bill.
Okay, next speaker.
I think I've located Mr. Altfeld. Give me one second. Mr. Altfeld?
Yes.
You may begin.
Okay, it says that my video is disabled in this meeting, can you see me?
No, we cannot see you, sir, we cannot see attendees, we can only hear them.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name is David Altfeld, co-owner of the Southern Land Company and Ron Chaptel's Not So Silent Business Park. This property has a very long history, and not to put you to sleep in boredom, but our involvement in this property dates back to 2000. We've been working on it for 21 years and counting, and paying property taxes, seemingly forever. When the county, it would be extending Honeygo Boulevard all the way to connect to Bel Air Road, the alignment bifurcated this site. It left us with almost 10 acres on the south side and 2.5 acres on the north side. Unlike other segments of Honeygo Boulevard, we donated the right of way for the county to build Honeygo Boulevard. Vince Gardiner recharged the property to commercial, and we all shared high aspirations to build a community grocery anchored shopping center. We hired, we hired commercial brokers to find us an anchor tenant. They showed at the Target, Kohl's, Safeway, Giant, and even Walmart, and they all turned us down. Apparently, we were considered to be at the end of the trade area and not in the core, so we waited and waited for a user to come, and it never happened. Fast forward to about eight years ago, we presented to the councilman and the community a free, a free market condo plan, but that didn't- This many years later, we were approached by small independent users like Wawa, a car wash, learning care childcare company, Valvoline, Steak and Shake, and others. Ron and I decided that we waited long enough so we should move on this activity. After divvying up the commercial lots, we were left with a four acre parcel in the rear of the property, fronting on Forge Road across from residential houses. That is the subject of today's work session. Ron and I thought, rather than waiting for another commercial tenant to come along for this four acre rear parcel, we would present to the councilman and to the community a residential plan for four story condos to be built by Beazer Homes, and that's another long story, but the bottom lot, but to bottom line it, the buildings were too tall, and again, we couldn't gain traction. The predominant issues were height and school overcrowding. We then tried to compromise and offer one half of the units to be free market townhouses, and one half of the units to be patio homes for seniors 55 and older. But again, we could not gain a consensus. But again, we could not gain a consensus. We then changed the plan to all two story patio homes restricted to 55 years and over with no school impact whatsoever. We asked the councilman and the community if we could have a backup plan of three story townhouses, also restricted by 55 and over, if the patio homes don't sell. And the community came back and said, that's okay, as long as the three story townhouses do not front on Forge Road.
Mr. Altfeld, um, if you can wrap up your comments.
I certainly will, and, and, and we agreed. Now it seems like everyone's, everyone's in agreement except for Neighbor Space. While we respect Neighbor Space very much, we hope they're mindful that this is not an ordinary rural residential neighborhood, but rather a mixed use, urbanized, commercial, residential community. The amenity package we're offering these seniors is substantial and, uh, will cost approximately $125,000. It's not the same kind of property where kids are playing in a field, it's active adult and elderly. So what we're planning to do, and with, uh, Pat Keller's guidance and critique of our original plan, we sent to him, we're planning to build a pavilion gazebo with, uh, uh, furniture, dining room tables, uh, sectional sofas, uh, a, a nice fire pit where everybody can sit around. Uh, we're planning, um, uh, barbecue grills, I think a few barbecue grills, we're planning, we, we're putting in 1,200 linear feet of sidewalks and we want to put, um, about six benches all along the sidewalk area. We're planning to build, uh, dog stations where with little baggies to clean up, uh, after the dog, dogs. And, um, we're also willing to contribute to Angel Park, our closest nearby park, $15,000. So our total, our budgeted total is a hundred and, a little over 125,000. And we hope our changes, uh, meet your satisfaction and you vote in favor of this legislation, thank you very much.
Mr. Alcaster?
I'm sorry, Chairman, you were muted and then I was muted, could you repeat what you said, I unmuted you.
No, I thanked the previous speaker and I said, next speaker, and I said, Mr. Alcaster.
I'm sorry, my apologies, our next speaker is David Shox. Are you there, sir?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you so much, Councilman Marks, uh, we sincerely appreciate the opportunity. Uh, you know, we know this has been a dialogue going on for many months now and we're, we're excited to, uh, see kind of the fruits of, of these many discussions. Uh, my name is David Jocks, I represent Beazer Homes, we are a national home builder based in Atlanta. Uh, we have divisions all across the country and I manage land acquisition for the Maryland and Delaware division. Uh, coincidentally, I'm also a Perry Hall resident, uh, so I am both professionally and personally vested in the success of this project, I, I want to see the long-term success of Perry Hall and, and obviously, um, to support my kids and family. Um, you know, I want to do something very special for this, this area. Um, we initially approached Southern Land because there are no new home opportunities that are for sale and designed for civic, senior living in this area. Uh, the typical homeowner who's lived in their home for 30 years, uh, that wants to move into something a little more age in place appropriate would need to move into a home that's older than what they currently live in to find something with the first floor main bedroom. We want to change that and provide a high quality housing option that allows our residents to age in place. Um, the products, as David Altfeld had discussed, these are two story attached patio style homes with included basements. Uh, a, as he noted, we previously sought to build our four story active adult condominium unit that had 96 units across three buildings. Uh, we worked with the neighbors hand in hand and obviously with Councilman Marks' tutelage to, to get us to an amicable uh, conclusion on the product type, even with approximately half the number of homes as we had originally thought. We are still extremely excited, uh, and extremely interested in pursuing this opportunity, uh, obviously as a smaller community. The goal for this community for us is to retain seniors that have lived in Perry Hall for many years. Um, so they do not have to relocate to buy a new home in Hartford County or Anarundel County or, or across the bridge. Um, again, as noted, our goal is to provide them very high quality housing, let us them age in place and stay near their families, uh, that they've lived here for many, many years. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, uh, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ron D. Do not see Mr. D. On our list of attendees, so I will come back to him, I'll move to the next one, and the next speaker is Rob Anderson. Anderson?
Good afternoon, thank you. Um, Rob Anderson over here in Gunpowder Overlook, been in Perry Hall for a number of years now. It's the first time I've ever been involved in anything, uh, local government or property development. However, after the development started at the corner there at Honey沟 and, and Belair Road, um, and the word got out about the office building that they wanted to build and the condos, we had to get involved, so I have coalesced the neighborhood, um, through a group email and we've used polling to come to a consensus for our entire neighborhood where everyone is in agreeance and, um, everybody wants these patio homes over all of the previous proposals that, that were submitted by the developer. David Marks has been instrumental in this and we really appreciate his support and his partnership. And we, um, as a part of this agreement, get to keep the trees that back our neighborhood. The trees are very important, um, for a couple of aspects. One, we have Perry Hall Road, um, that comes into the neighborhood and is lined by the set of tall trees. It blocks the wind, um, that we already get is very, very, um, swift and hard, um, many times throughout the year. Sometimes I feel like I live in Chicago, um, but without these trees, it would impact the, our homes even more to be battered by these winds that, that come up. And then obviously, the second part is the privacy that it will provide, um, from our neighborhood to the neighboring, um, neighborhood that is proposed to be built on the Rye property. So keeping these trees is a huge deal for us and also the fact that we were able to arrive at these patio homes is just, um, phenomenal. So i- if this were to get blown up and we'd have to start all over again, I, I don't know what we would do. Um, we, we fully support everything that's in this bill, um, and the development as proposed by, uh, Southern Land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris?
Our next speaker is Beth Miller. Ms. Miller?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so if you, if you don't mind, I'm going to testify both about this bill and Resolution 6721, I think it saves everyone time. Um, and I, I just want to echo, um, Claus Phillipsen's comments that our concerns are not, um, not about the actual end result here, it's the process being used. It, it boils down to rezoning and granting of variances by legislative action, um, which sort of sidesteps other pro, development processes that are already in place. Um, I really appreciate Council, the councilman's creation of a task force to work with the community and developer. Of course, Green Towns and Alliance, I'm speaking on behalf of Green Towns and Alliance loves trees, we like this part of the agreement. And, um, the conversion of commercial land to mixed use or residential is not problematic in and of itself. Uh, this is actually, um, a great way to revitalize and improve our commercial corridors in the county. Um, but we, we do see that Master Plan 2030 is coming and that discussion about revitalizing commercial corridors in Baltimore County needs to be part of that larger planning effort. And not done on a case by case basis that, uh, potentially waives pub, public facilities, public input, um, and offers, um, financial rewards to individual developers. So, um, you know, we are concerned with the waiving of, um, opens, some of the open space requirements, landscape offers that might happen in setbacks that are being waived, um, some of the other livability standards that are being waived. Um, and then this, uh, vehicle of using the limited exemption process also seems problematic and not appropriate for the scale of development. Um, and then Resolution 6721 goes further by creating a commercial revitalization district of land that's impacted this, by this bill, uh, granting tax credits and other services that will primarily benefit a single developer, which does not uh, seem to be in the spirit or intent of the CRD program. That program seeks to incentivize revitalization of entire communities, not just certain gateway properties. Um, the process that the councilman has engaged in sounds very much like a PUD, planned unit development. Um, and while that process isn't perfect, it is the proper vehicle for collaboration between developers and communities when a zoning change and development standard changes are desired in exchange for a community benefit, which it sounds like the community definitely feels this development is a benefit. Um, so those are our objectives, um, to this, this bill and Resolution 6721, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chris, uh, next speaker, please.
Sure, Chairman, our next speaker is Jason Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Jason Walsh, I'm the president of the Forge Reserve Homeowners Association. We are the community right across the street, uh, literally 10 feet, uh, stone's throw away from the property. Uh, firstly to, uh, uh, thank you for the ability to speak, Councilman Jones and, and, uh, Councilman Marks, I want to thank you personally for all the work you've done for us. You know, I, I've never been shy to, to tell you, Councilman Marks, when I don't agree with you, but, uh, uh, this time I do agree, I, I agree with everything that we've, we've come to the table, uh, to achieve. And, um, uh, I want to thank Mr. Altfeld and, and Southern Land. Uh, I want to thank the task force and Pat Keller. Um, I want to thank the, the fellow, uh, task force men and women that, that I served with. Uh, I think we came to what is a good bill, uh, and, and what works for the community. Uh, what I don't like hearing is, uh, Neighbor Space, which is a group I just, you know, learned more about in the last week. Uh, checked my emails and I, I guess I've been on the, the mailing list, I wish they would have come earlier, if they had, you know, major objections, they should have gotten involved with, with this earlier. I, I could have used the support eight, six or eight months ago, not, not six or eight hours ago. Uh, but, you know, living right across the street, yeah, I think we're, we're most inclined to, to be the ones that are experts on how it's going to impact us, not from Catonsville or from Towson. And I think we've come to a good resolution, you know, coming from a proposal for four story condos and, um, and 15 townhouses, which would have been over 140 units. Um, you know, we're, we're coming down in, in scale, uh, for this development. If it was commercial, it would be a bunch of asphalt and I think the, the two story townhomes are, are a much improved development. Want to thank Southern Land for all the negotiations and, and listening to us. I think, uh, you know, a PUD would have been, you know, something that could have been played out, but, uh, we've done all the work, you know, by several months of, of hard work, uh, putting together negotiations and, and I'll be the first to say I, I was completely against this from, from the beginning as condos, but, um, you know, the, the bill that's in front of us, I think is, uh, the effort of many people, dozens of people that have, uh, spoken out against this earlier. I spoke out against this at the last working group and now I'm speaking in favor because we've, we've gotten to a point where it, it makes sense for the community. So I'm speaking in favor, uh, of the, of 4621 and, and would like your support, uh, councilmen and councilwomen, uh, for this vote, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Thomas Castello. Are you there, sir?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good after, Mr., good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. My name is Tom Castello, Forge Reserve Homeowners Association Board Member and Resident. Uh, I work side by side with Jason Walsh for the last several months, uh, on this project. And as a board member, we represent the interest of our community, which is Forge Reserve, which is adjacent to the Shops of Perry Hall project on the dead end side of Forge Road. Several months back, Councilman Mark set up a task force, which we were a part of from the very beginning, to work collaboratively with the developer Southern Land. Thanks to Councilman Marks and his ongoing efforts to bring this group together and ensure our community had a voice in this project, I am pleased to announce that after several months and many reiterations, our community is in support of Bill 4621. This has been a long, arduous process that has had ample community input. This project is in the red zone and we look forward to bringing this to closure and have a beautiful finished product that will enhance the overall community at large. Just want to thank David Marks and David Altfeld from Southern Land and for our task members for all the work that they've put into this. That's it.
Thank you, Chris, uh, next speaker, thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker, Chairman, is Barbara Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My testimony was actually on, uh, Bill 6721.
You, Ms. Hopkins?
Yes.
You mean Resolution 6721?
Yes.
We have you registered for both, I have you registered for Bill 47 and then you also registered for Resolution 67. Did you want to decline your testimony for Bill 47?
Well, I believe, uh, this is 46.
I'm sorry, 46.
Yes, I think I registered for 47 and 67.
Wait a minute, let me check.
I'm happy to speak to it if you want me to.
No, you can just hold on to your testimony and we'll go to the next speaker and when we go to Bill 47, we will call you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, Mr. Chair, slight clerical error there, our next speaker is Jason Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Hi, how is everybody, thank you for having me, Council. My name is, uh, Jason Johnson, I live on Forge Road directly across from this project. Um, as the Councilman Marks and Southern Land can tell you, I've, I've been the loudest voice against this. Um, but after many months of negotiations, we've come to a solution that I think works for everybody. Um, what was started out as condos, um, is now a project that works for me. Uh, we're happy with it, I believe the other residents of Forge Road are happy with it. Um, it's a lot better than the condos or any commercial property and, and we're excited to see what's going to come about. And I do appreciate the help of Councilman Mark, Southern Land, and everybody else on the task force, I was on the task force. Um, I never thought we'd get here, but here we are, thank you to everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris, next speaker.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is Adam Rosenblatt. Hope I picked the right one here. Mr. Rosenblatt?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Marks, members of the council. Uh, thank you for your time this afternoon, as, as you've heard, we've had a long road to get to this point. And you've heard some of the history from Councilman Marks and the prior speakers, I'll try not to belabor any of the points. But Councilman Marks has truly left no stone unturned here and frankly, at times, he made life extremely difficult for us. We've had to make compromise after compromise, we've had to change the type of product we're proposing on this property. We've had to add amenities and add funding for public improvements and make agreements like retaining the trees on another property. So this legislation and the project, it will support at this point, as you've heard, is the product of months of negotiation and compromise. And it will result, I heard a reference to, uh, master plan from one of the opponents, it's going to result in a mixed use development that truly fulfills the overall master plan goal of, of live, work, play in one area. We have, uh, provided amendments that are proposed to address the specific issues that are of concern to the actual Perry Hall residents. So there's now a maximum area of the development tract on which the residential development can take place. There's a maximum height proposed for the homes that front directly on Forge Road. And the open space obligation is structured so that, as you've heard, the developer will be paying over $125,000 for improvements that will actually be used by the Perry Hall community and the 55 and older residents that will live here. So saving trees, moving our entrances, contributing money to an offsite public improvement that is important to the community. A lot has gone into these negotiations and the improvements and contributions are what open space And the improvements and contributions are what open space funds should be used for. So on this project, we went from being exempt to being required to provide all of these contributions and changes to our plan for the betterment of the surrounding community. So at times, it's very frustrating for developers to, to deal with David Marks. But when you come to a meeting like this and you hear the two HOAs that are most affected and were our biggest opponents, and particularly Mr. Johnson, who I, I think I just lost a bet because I never thought I'd hear him come and speak in favor of anything to do with this property, but it's all worth it. So we really, really appreciate all the time that went into this. The opposition at this point to the project, it is not from Perry Hall residents. The first speaker said he's from Catonsville. The second speaker is from Towson. And the organizations they work for, they're seemingly ignoring and overlooking the fact that our funds are going to directly to the type of improvements that their organization supposedly support and stand for. And there are organizations that, frankly, Councilman Marks has bent over backwards over the years to help. So it's extremely frustrating that they've inserted themselves at this late stage to try and block a project that is, that is the result of such detailed, prolonged negotiations between a developer and the actually affected residents in the surrounding community. So they've talked about supposed exemptions, but I want to clarify a few things. We're waiving certain setback requirements to cluster the homes so that we can provide more green space and amenity space on this site. We're certainly not waiving public input as there's been months and months and countless meetings with all the affected members of the community. We did include language that the impact fees are waived for this project, but that is what we would call a belts and suspenders inclusion clause because we are already exempt from the development impact fees for this project. We have a vested development plan, and we are making an amendment to that plan. At the conclusion of the impact fee legislation, there were certain grandfathering clauses. One of them was that amendments to vested projects are not subject to the impact fee legislation. So that is a belts and suspenders clause. And additionally, we're not waiving open space requirements. We've said it many times, but there's over $125,000 being paid for public improvements. We do thank Councilman Marks and all the members of the council for your help in allowing us to bring this project to fruition. And before I conclude, I just want to try and answer Councilman Catch's question from before. There will be triple protection to, to ensure that the residents of this project are over 55. First, the legislation itself only permits age-restricted housing. As one of the council members said, oftentimes, it's left to a covenant agreement or an HOA only to enforce that type of regulation. But in this zone, non-age-restricted patio homes are not a permitted use. We put right in the law that is being proposed here that the homeowners have to be 55 and older. So the HOA will also provide enforcement ability over that. There will be deed restrictions recorded in the land records. And Baltimore County has enforcement authority as a triple protection because it would be a violation of the zoning code to have residents here that are not 55 and older. So we hope that that triple level of protection satisfies you that this project will remain 55 and older for the duration unless someone came and changed this law by vote of the council. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, Adam, I thank you very much for your testimony. And I guess when I was playing in Attorney on TV, they never taught me about the suspenders and belt clause. I'll talk to you about that another time. Any additional questions or comment? Oh, I'm sorry. Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the next speaker. Any questions for Mr. Adam before we go on? All right, here. Next speaker, please.
Last speaker would be the gentleman who I called earlier, Mr. Ron D., but he is still not on the web app. That would be, Mr. Rosenblatt would be the last speaker for that item.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will let, first of all, I want to thank everyone for their testimony. It's very important that, you know, you are citizens and that we hear from the citizens of Baltimore County, this is your opportunity. It means the world to us because it helps us do our job. I'd like to congratulate you, Councilman Marks, because I can't speak for everyone, but I can tell you, you know, we've been through an awful lot of twists and turns with this property. And it would be good to see it finally move off our books, so to speak, and move forward. So good job for everybody. Councilman Marks, you have the last word.
Well, thank you. I don't need to say much more. This is a project supported by Perry Hall residents, and they are going to have to live with the consequences and the benefits. I want to thank the Southern Land Company for engaging the community. And I want to thank all those who testified in favor today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Marks. Now, we're going to move on to Bill 4121 with Kevin Reed.
Good evening.
COVID-19 FEMA project.
Sure, thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Bill 4121 is a request for supplemental appropriation of up to $20 million for FEMA projects that we will be submitting for eligible expenses in relation to COVID-19. The name of the game that we're doing with all of this external funding is to leverage external funding. And this is part of that mechanism to help us do that. We've identified up to $12 million in charges that are appropriate for FEMA submission. An example of these related to our food distribution, PPE, retrofitting, and quarantine and isolation. A normal FEMA event to a natural disaster would maybe, you know, we'd have a $1 to $3 million short-lasting event in which FEMA projects would be submitted and reimbursement would be received that may or may not cross fiscal years. And what we have here with COVID-19 is a large-scale, large-dollar event, and unfortunately, long-lasting situation, which is not typical. So this $20 million is really a placeholder. It's an accounting maneuver mechanism so that these expenditures don't sit anywhere, whether it's a general fund or a grant budget, while we wait for reimbursement. So by setting up this program, we avoid artificially inflating baseline expenditures that would have to be identified and backed out in relation to spending affordability or any other historical trends that we're looking at. By setting up this grant program, we'll also, reimbursements will be applied directly back to the grant program, which will help us with accurately capturing costs. FEMA is currently reimbursing at 100%, up from the normal 75%. So we do anticipate full reimbursement. And again, we've identified $12 million that we will be submitting, and we've worked with our MEMA representative that we will be looking at to support next week with, with them. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments from the members? Certain support about those projects. Now, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Now, we'll move right along to our last item for today. Councilman Marks, Resolution 67. 21. Honeygo Boulevard.
Did we skip Bill 4721 as well?
4721?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we haven't, we haven't done that one yet.
Okay, I can speak to the resolution. I'll be happy to talk about the resolution.
I'll go with, go with 4721.
Okay.
Get that one out of the way.
Sure, sure. Bill 4721 allows for certain development documents to be transmitted electronically instead of being mailed out. All of us have seen these bulky blueprints that are prepared from pending projects. And it just seems logical to me that a developer can place these documents in a Dropbox or a Google Drive and email that link out to community stakeholders. This would reduce printing costs and hopefully increase ease of access for residents and civic groups. I think this is a win-win for everyone involved, and I ask for your support.
Councilman Marks, I will co-sponsor that with you. And as long as people can still request their hard copy, correct?
Yeah, they can still request a printed copy. Sure.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'll be a co-sponsor. All right, that was my computer talking. So any questions or comments? Now, let's take it to the last one, Councilman Marks.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker for Bill 47, Ms. Hopkins. We're going to ask her.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council and Councilman Marks. We definitely think this is a step in the right direction and will hopefully begin to alleviate the challenge I faced when attempting to review development projects last December, going back to December of, or November of 2016. Fewer than 40% of the documents that should have been available for public review were actually available, including half of the concept plans. A greater effort needs to be made to make these documents publicly available as soon as they are filed, as I understand the case, to be in other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hopkins. Last but not least, Resolution 6721, Councilman Marks.
Thank you. This is a companion to Bill 4621, and it promotes revitalization in an area of Perry Hall that serves as a gateway into the community. This is a triangle of land that actually includes several properties, and I ask for your support.
Any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker for this, Ms. Hopkins, again.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council and Councilman Marks, on its face, this resolution looks less like a necessary policy action needed to spur commercial development and more like a big benefit to the owner of the parcel that is the subject to Bill 46-21. It caught our attention because, like the provisions in that bill, it is yet another leaf on what can only be described as a poisonous tree. And let me clarify that we only found out about this bill, to those who might still be listening from the community, by policing the council bills. Councilman did not advise us that the bill was being introduced and would essentially set aside the open space requirement for this project, nor did anybody else on the task force. So we found out about it on our own, and as soon as we did, we reached out to the councilmen. We reached out to Pat Keller, and we also reached out to the administration, all of whom have told us they have many serious reservations about the way this is happening. We don't disagree with what the community wants on this corner at all. We don't disagree. We think it's a great idea. We do disagree with the way that it's coming about because it sets aside the entire development process to benefit a single developer. That sounds an awful like spot zoning to me as a lawyer. We wonder why we can't afford schools or open space, and it's because our development process in this county is a mockery of ad hocery. That's what it's become, unfortunately. This really stinky stuff has to stop. Thank you very much.
I need to respond to that, Councilman Jones.
You, you certainly welcome.
First, first of all, the administration, as I understand it, does not oppose this bill or the resolution. Secondly, you know, I pride myself on being one of the most transparent elected officials I can be, as all you are. I am very accessible. I put things on the internet. I reach out to community groups. And until now, I think I've had a pretty good relationship with Neighbor Space of Baltimore County. As far as letting developers off the hook, I'll remind the speaker that I was the sponsor of impact fee legislation, which this council enacted in 2019. I have moved many times against developers when I think they are overstepping their bounds. In fact, the developer's own lawyer said that in this respect. But my job as a councilman is to be a problem solver and to bring my constituents together, which I did. I think it's very telling that the opponents to this bill did not live in Perry Hall. Now, I'm sorry that Neighbor Space was not included on the list of people that I consulted. There are other organizations that were not included, and I apologize for that. But on the other hand, I said before, I'm afraid that some of the people opposing are are letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. That's what we're trying to do here. We're trying to come to a consensus. We're trying to preserve trees in our Gunpowder Overlook. We're trying to advance the improvement of an important gateway into Perry Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Are you, any additional questions or comment? I want to, again, thank everybody who testified. We certainly appreciate you taking the time to provide us with your input. I certainly want to thank everybody else who's on the call, starting with the council members, through the staff, through the county employees. I know it's been a long day prior to this hearing. We had budget hearings. And so I don't, I can't even think. I think we're coming up on probably the fifth or sixth hour at this point. So thank you very much. Have a good night. And let me see, when do we come back again, Mr. Boswick?
We'll come back again tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, at 2:00. We will have, on Wednesday, May 19th, the Inspector General and Baltimore County Public Schools Operating Budget, sir.
All right. See everyone tomorrow. Same time, same batch.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.